Okay, we're now live and recording. So if you should, if we unmute you or whatever, you will now be recorded. So just so you are aware of that. So Angela said, "Are you going to be posting the exam with questions worked out as well as a key?" Am I going to be posting the exam with questions worked out as well as the key? Do you mean the exam review? Ah, okay, thank you. The review is already posted and the key's already posted. It was posted. Let's come in here, I'll show you where it's at. So it's right here. Under your course, on your homepage. If you come down, let me just collapse this. If you come down to exam reviews and keys, it is right here. Okay, and I put an announcement out also that said, "If you do this and you take a picture of it, or scan it in, or whatever, on Monday, March 23rd, before midnight, anytime, and email it to me, then I will give you extra credit for that." Okay, so, and then here's the key. So obviously, you can check your work, and what I'm saying will be worth extra credit is you have to show the work. You just can't turn in the answers. You have to have work like this written down in order to get the extra credit. Okay, is that, is that good, Angela? Does that answer your question? Great, okay. So here we go. So let's look at the next problem. The next problem says, "Use this vertex and this point on the graph to find the equation of the quadratic function." So let's write down our standard form for our equation. Let me come in here. So our standard form for the equation is, "y is equal to a times x minus h squared plus k." Do you remember that formula? You're gonna need to have it memorized for the exam. So what we need to do is we have to solve for a. That's gonna be our unknown. We know that our vertex is 3 for x and 1 for k, okay? And then we know also that our 1 here for x will be this, and our 2 will be this. So now we have everything known except for a, and a is what we're gonna be solving for. So coming in here. And we're gonna plug in everything we know. So I end up with 2 is equal to a times x, which is gonna be 1, minus h, which is 3 squared, plus k, which is 1. All I did was substitute in my actual values. Okay, that's all that I did. Let me erase that a, it's bothering me. So let me just get that corrected there. There we go. Alrighty, so this is gonna be 2 is equal to a. Now 1 minus 3 is negative 2, negative 2 squared is 4, plus 1. Now I'm gonna bring this 1 over, so I can do that through subtraction on both sides. And I end up with 2 minus 1 is just 1, is going to be equal to 4a. So I have 1 equals 4a. And we're gonna solve for a by dividing both sides through by 4, and we get therefore, a is equal to 1/4, okay? Now that I know what a is, I'm gonna plug it back into here and write down the standard equation. Because what it wants is the standard, the equation. So that is going to be, we're gonna leave it as, "y is equal to a 1/4 times x minus our vertex value for x squared plus 1." And that should be the answer. Hopefully that's the format that they're asking for it in. Oops, wrong thing. Let me make sure I'm still recording. Yep, okay. This right here, and there's our answer. Okay, so we got that one correct. And I just solved that without giving you all a chance to solve it. I'm sorry, I forgot to give you a chance to solve that one first. Please forgive me for that. So we're gonna let you guys work ahead. In fact, if you want to, just go ahead and keep working ahead, and then if you end up not knowing how to do one, I can jump to just that one, okay? So it says, "Decide whether the quadratic function has a minimum or maximum value. Find the minimum or maximum value. Also state the domain and the range of the function." So I'm gonna let you guys work ahead on that a little bit. The approach that I would recommend that you take is you evaluate, first off, it says, "Does it have a maximum or minimum function?" You're going to look at your value of a and determine whether it opens up or down. And whether it opens up or down will tell you if you have a minimum or a maximum value. Then it says, "Find the minimum or maximum value." You're gonna need the vertex because you have to know what the y-value is. That's gonna be y equals either the minimum or the maximum value. And then you're gonna have to look at the domain and the range of the function. No, I do not. Thank you for asking. So here we go. Looking at, let me go with my skinny ink. There we go. Looking at our leading coefficient, it is positive. If it is positive, I know that my parabola is opening up. If I open up, that gives me a minimum value. Okay, so that gives me a minimum value right there. Now I need to know, my minimum will occur at the y-value of the vertex. So the min is going to be at y equals, and that y's going to be the vertex coordinate for the y. So to solve that, it's gonna be a is equal to 2, b is equal to 8, x is going to be equal to minus b divided by 2a, which is negative 8, divided by 2 times 2, which is 4. So this is gonna give me 8 divided by 4, which is 2. So my x is equal to negative 2. f of x then is gonna give me my y-coordinate. So the function evaluated at negative 2, you're just gonna plug that all the way in. I'm gonna give you guys a second to plug that in and work through that. And I will go ahead and start working through this. So we're just gonna plug that into here. So it's gonna be 2 times x squared, negative 2 squared, plus 8 times negative 2, plus 1. And so this is going to be equal to 2 times 4 minus 16, plus 1. So that's going to be 8 minus 16. That's gonna give me negative 8 plus 1, which should give me a negative 7. So that is my y-coordinate. So my minimum value occurs at the y-coordinate for the vertex, so that's negative 7. My vertex, not that it asked me, is the point negative 2, negative 7. And then it said, "State the domain and the range of the function." The domain is gonna be all real numbers. Is all real numbers. And my range is going to be from negative 7 to positive infinity. So, uh... Negative 7 to positive infinity. And it can equal negative 7, so that should be a bracket. So let's come in here and look. Okay, there we have it. So the minimum value is at negative 7. The domain is all real numbers. And then the range is negative 7 to positive infinity. And it is a bracket because it can equal negative 7. Also notice that, hmm... I don't know. That thought just absolutely left my brain. I don't know. So anyway, there you have it. Okay. Any questions so far on this? Let me come back over here. Any questions, or is everybody set on that, on the problem so far that we've done? Is there a problem that you're particularly wanting me to jump to? It's 11:30, so we have, you know, an hour left. We probably will not get through the entire key, or I'm sorry, the entire review. So if there's a particular problem of interest, just, guys, let me know, okay? Otherwise, I'll just keep going in order. Alrighty, so it says, "Sketch the graph of the function." And it gives us the equation here. "State the x-intercepts, the y-intercepts, the vertex, and the axis of symmetry." So here we go. Remember that it says sketch, so I don't have to have every single point precise. But there are some known points that we're going to want to have identified specifically. And that's going to be your x-intercept, your y-intercept, and the vertex, okay? So here we go. So the first thing it says to do is find the x-intercept. So our x-intercept... Okay, we're gonna take our parabola right here, our equation for the quadratic, and we're going to factor it. We're gonna say each factor equal to 0, and then solve for x. Because what we wanna do is find what values will make y equal to 0. Because when y equals 0, I am on my x-axis. If the point is on the x-axis, we know that it is indeed an x-intercept. So let's look at factoring. So we're factoring this right here. So it's gonna be an x and an x, and a negative and a negative. So that means I'm gonna have opposite signs. And the larger of the two factors is going to take on the negative value. So if I go 2 and 4, I can let my 4 be negative and my 2 be positive. So I'll end up with x times x, which is x squared. And then negative 4x plus 2x is gonna give me negative 2x. And then a positive 2 times a negative 4 gives me a negative 8. So those are my factors. I'm gonna set each factor equal to 0. And therefore, x is equal to negative 2. And therefore, x is equal to positive 4. And we will put up here as our x-intercepts. We have 2 of them. One is at negative 2, 0. And then the other one occurs at 4, 0. And we'll go ahead and plot those. So that's negative 2 right here, and then 4 right there. So those are the x-intercepts. Let's solve for our y-intercept. So our y-intercept... We know that x is gonna be 0, we just don't know what y is yet. So that means we're going to plug in 0 for x all the way through. We're just gonna find this. So this is going to be 0 squared minus 2 times 0 minus 8. It's gonna equal negative 8. So our y-intercept is at the point negative 8, right there, okay? So far, so good. Now the next thing, that took care of this, took care of this. And so now we have to do the vertex. So to calculate the vertex, we're gonna come in here, and let me grab this right here. And I'm gonna move the screen up just a little bit. And for our vertex, it's going to be minus b divided by 2a, and then the function evaluated at minus b divided by 2a. And that is going to be equal to whatever we have there. Okay, so I know that my a is equal to 1, my b is equal to negative 2. Just move this up so I have a little bit more room to write on my computer screen. And so x is going to be equal to minus b divided by 2a. So that is going to be equal to negative, negative 2. Because this negative is this one here. The negative 2 went inside, okay? So I have a negative times a negative, divided by a 2 times a, which is 1. So this becomes positive 2 divided by 2, which equals 1. So for my vertex, my x-coordinate is 1. Now I need to solve what my y-coordinate is. And in order to do that, I plug in the value 1 into the equation, and I solve. So my equation is x squared minus 2x. So it's going to be f of 1, which was x squared minus 2x, let's see here. Minus 2x minus 8. Minus 2 times x minus 8. So that is just gonna be 1 minus 2 minus 8. So 1... 1 minus 2 minus 8 is negative 9. Okay, so there's our vertex, it's going to occur at the point (1, negative 9). So we're gonna come in and plot that. So 1 and then negative 9, it's like right there, okay? And then the only other thing I need to solve for is my axis of symmetry. And my axis of symmetry... My x axis of symmetry is x is equal to 1, okay? It is x equals whatever the x-coordinate of your vertex is. So let's draw this. We'll put a quick sketch in. Oops, not that. This is what I want. What color do I wanna make my, make it, this right here? So it's gonna go... Like that. And then my axis of symmetry is this right here. A little bit off on that. That's all on the 1, right there, okay? So that is the answer for this one. We'll go in and compare this to the key. Let me erase a couple of these dots real quick, 'cause that's gonna bother me. Oops, we hit an undo on that. Just one time, there we go. So it says, "Negative 2, 4, negative 8, 1, 9, axis of symmetry." And there's our graph, okay? So we are set. Any questions so far, guys, on this? Thank you, Isamar, for feedback. Thank you, oh, thank you, Stephanie. Anybody else? Angela, still there? Good job. Let me see who else is still here. Stephanie. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Okay, so there we go. Alrighty, next problem. Make it a little bit larger. Make sure I have plenty of writing room. There we go. Okay, here we go. So it says, "Write an equation for the quadratic function based on the graph below. Hint, locate the vertex and a point on the graph." So yep, that's exactly what we're gonna do. So we're gonna come in here, and we're going to identify some important points. So the vertex is gonna be right here. And then you need another known point. You could choose this point here, this point here. None of the other points actually go straight through a perfect known point. So you don't ever wanna use something like a point here or here to approximate. You just don't wanna do that. You need a very specific known point to achieve this. So here we go. Okay, so we know that our vertex is the point (1, negative 3), (1, negative 3). And I'm gonna choose the point (4, 0). And then the reason I'm choosing the point (4, 0) is because both numbers are positive. I minimize mistakes, and my students have a higher probability of getting answers correct if you minimize the number of times you deal with negative values. So if you have a choice between a negative and a positive point where your coordinates are both positive or both, or one of them is negative, choose the positive. Alrighty, so it says we are to write an equation, okay? The form of the equation is going to be, "y is equal to a times x minus k squared plus h," okay? Remember that our vertex is h... Oh, that should be hk, shouldn't it? Shouldn't it be hk as opposed to kh? Yeah, it's hk. Not sure why I transpose that. Let's get that off of there. So it should be hk, hk. And I'm just gonna double-check that real quick. Yeah, hk. Alrighty. Excuse me. And then our point right here is an x and a y. So we're just gonna plug everything in like we did on the first one. So you guys go ahead and take a moment, work this one through. I'm gonna wait a moment or two, and then I'll pick up. I think everybody who's in attendance today should be able to solve this one on their own. Oop, my 3 disappeared there. Let's try that one again. Minus 3. Okay, how did everybody do? I went through and did the work quietly, as opposed to teaching. Did everybody get the right answer? Let me double-check that I got the right answer. Let's come over here. And 1/3 times that times that. Looks like I got the right answer. And let's see what everybody else says. Good job, high five. Very good, everybody. Excellent. Oh, you popped in and you said you got it too. Good job, okay. Kelvin, are you there today? I don't think Kelvin's here today. Kelvin was here the other day. Nope, okay. So coming over here. "Determine the x-intercept, y-intercept, in-behavior, maximum points." And also, let me just, you know, I don't think I will get in trouble for saying this, guys. Oh, Kelvin, you were there, good. Did you get it right then, the last one? Did you do it? Good. If you've got friends that are in college algebra at UWF right now, and it would help them, they're welcome to attend this. We've got enough, but we're not gonna... I may not answer all of their questions, meaning that if, I won't take away from my students' time by answering their questions. But if there's time, I would be happy to help them also. And then I am, it looks like the reporting on this might work. And if it does, feel free to share this with any of your classmates or UWF fellow students that are also in college algebra. I don't, I don't mind that at all, okay? So keep this current, and don't show this message again. You know how often I hit that and it still pops up? Okay, so here we go. "So determine the x-intercepts, the y-intercepts, the in-behavior, the maximum number of turning points of the following function." Okay, here we go. First things first, let's make sure it's in proper order. It is. We have a 4, a 3, and a 2. So that's the first thing I wanna make sure is that we haven't had a trick played on us and things are scrambled and out of order. When it says the maximum number of turning points, remember that the maximum number of turning points is the degree minus 1. So our degree on this one here is 4. So max turning points would be 4 minus 1, which equals 3, okay? So it's always 1 less than the degree. So that answers that. It says x-intercepts, y-intercepts, and in-behavior. So let's look at the fact that we have, our degree is 4. And so this is an even number. Therefore, we know that we have a parabola, and our leading coefficient is positive. So we have a lea, a parabola that opens up, okay? So that's gonna be our in-behavior is going to be shape of a parabola and going off to positive infinity on the range. Okay, and then x-intercepts, y-intercepts, here we go. So x-intercepts for this right here, let's factor out an x squared to begin with. So it's gonna be x squared times x squared. X squared times x squared equals x to the fourth, plus 4 times x. It's going to give me my x, my 4x cubed. So x squared times 4x is 4x cubed. Zachary, would you please get me, I'm aware I'm recording, I'm thirsty. Would you please get me a glass of water? Thank you, sweetie. I am recording and I'm live with students. I'm doing both. Okay, and then, so then for our last factor here, we're gonna pull out, let's see, our negative 60. Negative 60 times x squared gives me negative 60x squared. So that's the very first part of our factor. I'm going to assume, thank you, son, that this is factorable. Guys, go ahead and work faster than me. You don't have to go at my slow pace today. Feel free to zoom right on by me. So let's list our factors for 60. I'm not even sure of all of them off the top of my head. Obviously, we have 1 and 60. We have 2 and 30. We're gonna have 3 and 20. We're gonna have 4 and 15. We're gonna have 5 and, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. 4 times 15, yep. And then 60 divided by 5. I don't have that one off the top of my head. 12, there we go, and 12. And then we have 6 and 10. 7, 8, 9, 10, and that's it. Wow, there's a lot of factors for 60. Because we have a negative right there, we know that we have opposite signs on this part right here. Because this is a positive 4, we know the larger of the two factors is going to be positive. So what I need to do is look at all of these right here and see what will give me a difference of 4. Well, 60 minus 1 is 59. 30 minus 2, 28. 20 minus 3... twenty minus three, seventeen, fifteen minus four is eleven, twelve minus five is seven, ten minus six is four. Bingo, there we go. So this one right here is our factor that will give us a difference of four. And remember, I said that our middle term here is positive. That tells me the larger of the two factors, which is ten, must be positive. So the ten is gonna go here, the six is gonna go there. Now I have all of my factors. Why did I need my factors? Because I'm finding x intercepts, okay? I'm gonna set each factor equal to zero. This is a factor, it's a variable, okay? And so therefore, it is a factor. Be very careful on your exam, it is a very well-known trick to put, list factors and have a, a coefficient out front, okay? No variable, just a coefficient. Well, that's not a factor, that's just a coefficient, okay? So, uh, make sure it's a variable, in other words, it's a letter, okay? So we have x squared is equal to zero, x plus ten equals to zero, and then x minus six equals to zero. So therefore, x equals zero, therefore, x equals negative ten, therefore, x equals positive six. So what are my x intercepts? I have three different x intercepts. My first one is zero, zero. My second one is going to be negative ten, zero. And then my last one, if I can squeeze it in, is gonna be six and zero. We're just gonna have to put that like that, there we go. Alrighty, so those are my x intercepts. In-behavior taken care of, maximum number of turning points taken care of. Y intercept needs to be calculated out, and that will go fast. So my y intercept means I solve this right here. We let x equal zero, we see what y is equal to. So we're gonna have zero to the fourth, plus four times zero cubed, plus sixty times zero squared, it equals zero, okay? So my y intercept is the point zero, zero, okay? So, let's double check all of our answers here with the key. So, there's our three x intercepts, there's our y intercept. In-behaviors, rises to the left and rises to the right, up, up, up. So that's what I said before, that our, uh, domain was positive infinity, opening up and, uh, going po, to positive infinity. Maximum number of turning points is three, okay? So far, we've got a hundred, guys. Uh, it looks like number seven is the same concept. If it is, we're gonna skip that one. It is, I'm gonna skip this one because it's very similar to this one, and for the sake of time, I want to introduce as many concepts as possible. So real quick, before we move on, how many people did number six and got it right? Good job, excellent, very good. Okay, great. Okay, says find the zeros of the function and give the multiplicity of each state whether each zero crosses, touches the x-axis. Okay, here we go. So let's grab some ink up here, um, I wanna make my chart in purple. So we're gonna list our x intercepts. Uh, we're gonna determine whether, uh, what the multiplicity, multiplicity of each x intercept is. Then we're gonna determine whether that multiplicity is an even or odd number. Then we're going to determine whether it, um, is tangent, well, let me write touch, sorry, touches or crosses. Okay, so the first thing we have to do is determine our x intercepts to answer all of this. It says find all the zeros, that's the same thing as x intercepts. So we're gonna write down, let's see here, four x to the fifth, minus twelve x to the fourth, plus nine x cubed, okay? My computer's getting hot, so we're gonna pull out the largest, uh, uh, variable that we can, um, and there's no common coefficient that I can pull out, okay? So it's just gonna be pulling out x cubed. So if I pull out x cubed out front, x cubed times what equals four x to the fifth? It will be four x squared, okay? So four times one is four, x cubed times x squared gives me x to the fifth. What do I have to multiply this by for it to equal negative twelve x to the fourth? So, it's negative twelve x. So, x cubed times x is x to the fourth, and then negative twelve x, uh, to the fourth. Now, the last one is just gonna be plus nine, okay? Uh, this might factor, but if I'm taking an exam, I'm not going to, uh, even attempt to factor this one, uh, because if it doesn't factor, I'm gonna have to use the quadratic equation. So I'm going to jump to the quadratic equation on this one right here, uh, although also on an exam, I would expect it to be factorable. Um, so, we can, uh, look at that, but let's go ahead and just do the quadratic equation very quickly. So we would have a is equal to four, b is equal to negative twelve, c is equal to nine. My x is going to be equal to minus b, plus or minus the square root of b squared minus four ac, all divided by two a. Okay, so we're gonna plug this in, and a negative b times a negative twelve is gonna give me a positive twelve, okay? So positive twelve, plus or minus the square root of b squared, negative twelve squared is one hundred forty-four, minus four times a, times c, all divided by two times a, which is going to be eight, okay? I'm skipping a few steps because I'm on an exam and I only have so much time, right? So, we're gonna plug this in right here, one forty-four minus four times four times nine. Ah, so I'm gonna double check that, four times four is sixteen, times nine is one forty-four. So, underneath my radical right here, I end up with one forty-four minus one forty-four, which is equal to zero, okay? So I end up with twelve, plus or minus zero, okay? Uh, which is just gonna be zero, divided by eight. So in this case, I'm going to end up with, uh, four will go into, uh, twelve three times, four will go into eight two times. And because this is a little bit odd, I do wanna go ahead and compare to the key real quick. Um, what problem are we even working? Uh, number eight. Number eight, yep, three halves, so, um, where is my thing? So, uh, three halves, and, um, it's a positive three halves, it's a square, okay? So that's why it's gonna end up being twice on that. So we're gonna end up with multiplicity of two for those. So, uh, our final factors then would be, this is, would actually equal to x cubed times x minus three half. Oops, I, I meant to say cubed, I said cubed, I just didn't write cubed. So, cubed, and that is going to be squared. Alrighty. Um, so we're gonna list our zero, list our three halves, and then write the word degree right there, okay? Zero occurs three times, uh, three halves occurs twice, three is an odd number, two is an even number. If it's odd, it crosses, if it's even, it touches. My degree is five, which matches that up there. So we should be set. Come on down here, whoops, there we go. Three cross, two touch, yep. Okay, let me come back in and talk to everybody in the class. How are you doing? Are you doing well? Any questions so far? Okay, good. Alexandria, everybody else? Did you get that one? That was a tough one. You're good? Okay. So going back, let's look at another problem. How much time do we have left? We have thirty minutes or so. And, we're gonna come in here. Uh, one of the other things is because I didn't end up with a positive and a negative, I knew that this was multiplicity of two. So let's come on in here and maximize this, whoops. Okay, find the zeros of the function, give the multiplicity of each state whether each zero crosses or touches. Ah, great question right here. Uh, we're gonna do this one real quick. Notice there is a variable right there. Because there is a variable, that is a factor, okay? So, um, so we end up with, uh, two x to the fourth equal to zero, two x plus one equal to zero, and then x minus three equal to zero, okay? So, in this case, x is going to equal to zero. Um, this one here, we'll subtract one from both sides, and we get two x is equal to negative one. Therefore, x is equal to negative one-half, okay? And then here, x is going to equal to three. We'll go ahead and set up our chart over here. We'll have x, multiplicity, even or odd, and then touch, touch or cross. Okay, and we'll put down negative one-half, zero, three, and then our degree. Okay, so negative one-half occurs, uh, so negative one-half occurs, uh, seventeen times. That is an odd number, and therefore, I cross at the x-axis, at the x-intercept, negative one-half. Zero, zero occurs four times. It is even, therefore, I'm tangent, or I just touch at the x-intercept of zero. X equals three is multiplicity of four. That is even, therefore, I'm tangent, or I touch. The degree, we will add all those together, and so we will end up with twenty-five. So seventeen plus four plus four is twenty-five. So our degree is twenty-five. So find the zeros, I did that, give the multiplicity of each, did that. State whether they cross or touch, and we did that. Alrighty, let's compare our chart to seventeen, four, and four to the answer key. Um, seventeen for that one, four and four, touch, touch, cross. So we're good on that. We're gonna skip ten because it's just like the other ones. Um, let's see here. Find the x-intercepts, multiplicity, uh, well, actually, it's not exactly the same. This one, we actually graph. So I'm gonna ask the students that are attending, do you all want me to do that one, which would be a graphing one? Or do you want me to skip and go to a completely different topic? Your choice. We'll put it up to a vote for the people who are listening right now. Skip, okay? Anybody else have an opinion? Okay, Alexandria, I'm gonna skip it. Do you have one in particular that you'd like me to head over and do? You can open this up on Canvas if you haven't opened it up and looked at it yet. I'm just gonna open these up and make these a little bit larger. Let's see what she said, or somebody said. Um, long division, okay, here we go. Thank you for the feedback. Okay, let's find long division on here. Number twelve is long division, number thirteen, um, let's do, whoops, I was gonna s, put my feedback in there. Number thirteen, yep, that's the one I was gonna say too. So I agree with you, let's do thirteen. Here we go, guys. Okay, first things first, uh, so, my brain is getting tired. Let's see here, okay. Uh, so, we have two x, so it's, I'm gonna kinda start up here, even though we're doing problem thirteen, I'm gonna give myself plenty of room to work up here, okay, guys? So it's gonna be two x minus one. Whoops, come on, computer, please don't get so hot, don't give out yet. And then it's going to be, uh, two x to the fourth, plus x cubed, plus three x squared, plus two x minus twenty, okay? Double check, everybody, make sure I have that written down right, 'cause the last thing I wanna do is not have that right. Looks good, okay. Holler now if it's not. Okay, so the first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna say, what do I have to multiply two x by for it to equal two x to the fourth? Well, that would be one to get the coefficient, so that's, that's easy. And then, x times x cubed is what I would mar, multiply by. So it's just gonna be x cubed. Remember, the other way that I said we could look at this is I can say, two x to the fourth divided by two x, and see what that equals. You'll see those cross out, and then I get x cubed. So that's how I know that x cubed goes right there. So there's two ways of looking at it, okay? I'm gonna do each one of these both ways. Once I have this, now I take this up here, and I'm gonna multiply it by each part here, okay? So x cubed by two x is gonna give me two x cubed. X cubed multiplied by negative one is gonna give me negative x cubed. Put your parentheses around here and put your subtraction sign right there. Add or subtract straight down. Um, and that should be a four. I don't know if that's what that click just came in, was a four or not. Let's see here. Yes, thank you Alexandria for helping me catch that, thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna subtract, so, uh, two x to the fourth, subtract two x to the fourth, that gives me a zero. X cubed minus a negative x cubed. A negative times a negative is a positive. So, x cubed plus x cubed is actually going to give me two x cubed, okay? Now, two x times what equals two x cubed? It's just gonna be x squared. So it's plus x squared. We'll double check that. Two x cubed divided by two x equals, those disappear, and this becomes x squared, okay? Now, x squared times two x is two x cubed. X squared times negative one is negative x squared. This right here comes straight down, and I'm gonna get plus three x squared. I'm gonna put parentheses right here, subtract, and now, uh, subtract down, so two x cubed minus two x cubed, zero. Three x squared minus, times a minus is a plus. So three x squared plus x squared is four x squared. Two x times what will equal four x squared? Well, I'm gonna have to have a two, 'cause it takes a two times a two to equal four. And then, x times x And then x times x to equal x squared. Okay? Over here, I'm gonna do the, do the math. So four x squared divided by two x. Two will go into two once, two will go into four two times, and then my, uh, x squared, uh, divided by x is just x, so it's two x. Okay, so that's how I got that right there. If you're going the other way. All right, now I'm gonna take my two x, and I'm gonna multiply it by this two x, and that's gonna give me four x squared. Two x times negative one is negative two x. And this one right here, I'm gonna bring it straight down. So it's plus two x. We're gonna put parentheses, and we're gonna subtract. So four x squared minus four x squared is a zero. Two x minus, times a minus becomes a positive. So two x plus two x is a four x, okay? What do I have to multiply two x by to have it equal four x? Well, I'm just gonna multiply it by two. And over here, I'll do the math. So four x divided by two x. My x's disappear. Four divided by two is two, and that's how I get my two right up there. Okay, I feel like I've got a little bit too much green going on, so I'm gonna switch my mouse to a different color. There we go. So that way, it tracks. So my two here went right there. Okay, so maybe that'll help track it a little bit better. So, uh, two x, or two times two x is four x. Two times negative one, negative two. Put our parentheses, put our subtraction, and we need to bring our twenty all the way down. And so that's going to be negative twenty. Excuse me. So four x minus four x gives me zero. Negative twenty minus a minus gives me a plus, so negative twenty, plus two is gonna give me negative eighteen. So my answer is going to be x cubed plus x squared plus two x plus two plus negative eighteen divided by, uh, two x minus one. So let me write that over here. So let me switch ink colors, just so I have a little bit of contrast. Actually, let me do this color. Oh, no, it was black, good. So this would be, in this case, x cubed plus x squared plus two x plus two, uh, not plus, but how about minus? Minus eighteen over two x minus one. Okay, so let's compare that to the key. Holding my breath, 'cause I'm so tired, and hoping I got it right. Let's see here. This was number thirteen. Okay, so they will accept that as the answer, or that is the answer, either one. So those were one and one, two, two, and then that. So one, one, two, two. Let me double check my answer. One, one, two, two. Yep, all right, high five. Any questions on that one? That was a long one, guys. Any questions on that? Got it. Also, I noticed when you say your computer's getting hot, your voice gets very, uh, pixelled, and there's a huge lag. Yeah, uh, I'm on hotspot, and I live out in the country, guys. I don't even have internet at my house. So the fact, uh, that we're actually even able to do a WebEx is like amazing to me. Um, so, uh, hopefully the audio is, is sufficient. And maybe the audio for the recording will be clear- crystal clear. That's what I'm hoping. Are you able to understand most of it, Alexandria? Okay, good, thank you. Alrighty. Um, and literally, so, uh, Tuesday, I worked all day, as you all know, and I did not finish work until four sixteen a.m. Wednesday morning. And then I had to be up back to teaching at eleven o'clock in the morning. And I did not go to bed last night. It was supposed, I was trying to get to bed at one, but it ended up being at one-thirty before I actually got into bed. And then up this morning again, teaching. So my voice is, is starting to give out also, so I apologize for that. Uh, hopefully by Tuesday, I'll be well rested, and my voice will, will have recovered. Okay, so yeah, I have to do your videos for your class yet, and then I can hopefully get some rest. Um, okay, so let's do another problem. Do you all have a particular preference? Uh, please let me know if you do. We're just gonna look through this, and, uh, do you all want me to do a synthetic one? Um, rational zeros, uh, asymptotes? Tell me what you all, where's your weakness, and, um, what do you all wanna focus on? If not, I'll just pick one. Okay, Alexandria, you take care, and we will see you, uh, Tuesday's the exam. Please remember that you can text me anytime during the weekend. You can email me. If you send me an email and you don't get a response, send me a text, 'cause I'm gonna be, I'm gonna do my best to monitor both very closely. But I am more, uh, in touch with my texting as opposed to email. So please, please, don't hesitate to, uh, reach out to me if you have a question. And you are welcome. Okay, anybody else? Okay, then we're just gonna pick one off of the review. Can I do nineteen or twenty? Tuesday. So Tuesday, Tuesday, Tuesday. Um, Kelvin, give me more input. That was the toughest concept we faced on this exam. Uh, what is the toughest? I haven't seen the exam, but, uh, based on my experience, uh, oh, um, what I s-, in general, I would say that this exam is probably one of the toughest exams in general. Uh, the, probably number twenty, uh, the graphing and doing the asymptotes seems to be the hardest part for, for students. It's, it's the graphing with the asymptotes. Uh, that definitely seems to be what I would say is, is we're, uh, it, a student that will give up and not even try, or they just, they just throw up their hands on the exam, it's with the asymptotes. So let me see what everybody's saying. Can I do nineteen or twenty? Yes, I will. Um, with a graph, can we do that? Yes, that would be, uh, nineteen or twenty, I think. Nineteen and twenty. Find the vertical asymptotes, horizontal asymptotes. Um, so let's do twenty-one, because twenty-one, I am, uh, doing the same thing as nineteen and twenty, but I'm also graphing it. Uh, and that's gonna be the concept that you're gonna have on the exam, is you're gonna be asked to do something very much like twenty-one. And since twenty-one encompasses the concepts of nineteen and twenty, we'll do twenty-one. Okay, so here we go. So find the x and y intercepts, the vertical asymptotes, the horizontal asymptotes, state the domain, and then graph the function. Plot a few additional points if necessary to complete the graph of the function. I can promise you, there's gonna probably be one. No, I haven't seen the exam, but I can promise you that there's gonna be something like this on the exam. So, uh, x-intercepts, here we go. So the first thing I'm gonna do is determine my x-intercepts. I know my y-value is zero, so to find my x-intercept, um, step one, remove common factors. For this problem, there are no common factors, so there are none to remove. Step two, we take, and we take the numerator, take numerator, uh, set equal to zero, and solve for x. Remember, this is counterintuitive. It's the numerator that we use to get the x-intercepts. So it's gonna be x minus two is equal to zero. Therefore, x is going to equal two. So my x-intercept is going to be the point two zero, and I'm going to plot that right there. Now I'm gonna come in, I'm gonna switch ink colors, and I'm gonna find my y-intercept. My y-intercept. I know from the beginning that my x is gonna be zero. I don't know what y is, but I know what x is, okay? So to find my, uh, whoops, whoa, 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 whoa. Sorry about that. I don't wanna see that. That indicates my screen there is having problems. Let's not see that. Okay, so it's, uh, going to be solving f of zero, which is zero minus two divided by zero plus two, which equals negative two divided by positive two, which equals negative one. Okay, so my y-intercept is at negative one, right there. Okay. So I've done the x-intercept, I've done the y-intercept. Next is vertical asymptotes. And I abbreviate that as V A. So my vertical asymptotes are going to be my V As. Okay, uh, it's gonna be, uh, if I have any, x equal to something. Step one is remove common factors. I did that already, there are none. I did that when I looked for the x-intercepts, okay? So I removed common factors, there are none. So step two is we're gonna look at the denominator. So set denominator equal to zero, and solve for x, okay? So our denominator is, uh, x plus two. So it's gonna be x plus two equals zero. Therefore, x is equal to negative two. So I'm gonna have a vertical asymptote at x equals negative two. So we're gonna put that in next. So at negative two, I'm gonna draw dotted lines like so, okay? The next thing we have to do is do our horizontal asymptote. And I'm gonna do this one right here, so I'm gonna say for my horizontal asymptote, horizontal asymptote is gonna be y is equal to. I am not even gonna pretend that I have this memorized right this second. I'll just see if I can have it on my cheat sheet right there. I do, I happen to have it right here. Uh, so, we're gonna examine the degree of our numerator and the degree of our denominator. So, uh, the first thing you really wanna do is you wanna say the degree of, oops, of the numerator is one, and the degree of the denominator is also one, okay? So we're gonna look at the original function. So that's x to the first power, x to the first power. That gave me my degrees. So I pulled up my little cheat sheet here, and it says, if the degree of the numerator equals the degree of the denominator, the last I checked, one equals one, so we're good on that. Then the horizontal asymptote is the ratio of the leading coefficients of each. So that means I have to look at the leading coefficient of the numerator and the leading coefficient of the denominator, and, uh, and that will be our, uh, horizontal asymptote. So our leading coefficient of the numerator is the number one. The leading coefficient of our denominator is also the number one. So that means my, uh, horizontal asymptote is gonna be y is equal to one divided by one, which equals one. These ones here are not these here, okay? I hate the fact that this, uh, has those, has those same numbers. Um, for the review in particular, it would've been really good to have had, uh, different numbers here so that it clearly jumps out at you. The degree is not what I have here. What I have here is the coefficient of x. What number is in front of x? It's not written there, because it's a one, so it's just, uh, an x. And what's the coefficient in front of the x here? It's a one, okay? So my horizontal asymptote is the ratio of the leading coefficient of the numerator divided by the leading coefficient of the denominator, which equals one, which is right there. Okay, so we're gonna draw that in. So... Like that. And then it says, uh, so we did horizontal asymptote, state the domain, the domain. The domain in this case is going to be, um, see our domain. We're gonna look at the denominator to determine the domain, and it's gonna be x plus two. So the domain is gonna be calculated by saying x plus two cannot equal zero. Therefore, x cannot equal negative two. So our domain is gonna be negative infinity to negative two. Whoops, that's a, I promise I was wr- writing a negative two there. Union, we're gonna jump over negative two and go to positive infinity. So that is our domain. Now, let's see, what else does it say on the instructions? Um, and then, does it ask for the range? Okay, so then sketch the graph of the function. Plot a few additional points. So this one over here, okay? I've got two points. That's good enough for me to know that the general shape of this is going to look like this. What I don't know is, is this, on this side, going to be like this? Or is it going to be like this, okay? So let's go ahead and plot a couple of points. Uh, all I need is two, um, and they just have to be values less than negative two. So I'm gonna, uh, calculate, uh, those. I'm gonna say for x is less than negative two, x. Oh, you can't really see that too well, can you? Let's pick a different color. Pick green. Okay, so for x, x is less than negative two. Come on, computer. Uh, we're gonna pick just two x-values, because it's an exam. I'm tired, and, uh, nobody has extra time on the exam. So we're gonna pick two points. Pick negative four, negative three, negative four, and negative three, and evaluate those. So if I take negative four and I plug it into here, negative four minus two is negative six. So we get negative six divided by negative four plus two is negative two. So a negative divided by a negative is gonna give me a positive. Uh, six divided by two is three. So I get the point negative four, positive three. So one, two, three, right there, okay? I'm gonna go ahead and calculate one more, and that's gonna be at negative three. So negative three, negative three minus two is negative five. Negative three plus two is negative one. Negative five divided by negative one is a positive five. So my next known point is negative three, positive five, which is up here. So that's going to tell me that the general shape over here should be something like that. And now we're done with that. Let's check against the key if we got everything right. Whoops. So, um, let's see, our x-intercept was at two. Y-intercept at negative one, that's correct, I agree with that. Uh, horizontal asymptote was at negative two. Y is our horizontal. Domain is correct, and, um, the shape of the graph is correct. So I would say we did well on that. Let me come back over here and see who all we have left. We have just a few students left. It says, uh, sorry I had to go to the airport, not a problem. Um, I'm pretty tired, guys. Uh, can we wrap today up? Or is there one more problem that's, uh, that you really, really wanna see? Thank you, oh. Uh, Bethany, Emily, Kelvin, and, uh, Alex. Are you guys good to go? Okay, thank you. Alrighty, so we're gonna end this, uh, and I say thank you so much for attending. I will be putting together a, uh, video of how to, I don't know, video or written instructions of how that we're gonna do the exam. I will be putting together a uh, video of how to, I don't know, video or written instructions of how that we're gonna do the exam. Uh, just remember that uh, I understand that there's technical difficulties, and don't panic, okay? If things don't go right uh, for you, uh, you know, as you're trying to learn how to do everything on the exam on Tuesday, just don't panic, take your time. Uh, like I said, I'm gonna give extra time uh, for technical issues. So you should have time to get everything resolved without any stress. Uh, so y'all take care, send me a text if you have questions and uh, we'll see, well, we won't see on Tuesday. It'll be an exam and I'll send out good, good information. Yes, you are using the lockdown browser for the exam, which means you will not be able to surf the internet on the device that you're taking the exam on. In addition, we, you will have a camera on, so uh, they actually pay people to watch students take tests. Um, so you will be observed while you're taking your test, um, to verify that you're not cheating, that you're not using your cellphone or other notes or anything of that nature. So um, so make sure you have your, you don't need sound, they're not, uh, they're not listening to you. Uh, but they will be watching you visually, and uh, I don't know, I think I'd like to know how much they get paid, maybe I could get a job like that, I don't know. Watching people, be kinda neat, I guess, I don't know. Anyway, so I'm rambling, y'all take care, have a good night, and I will see you on Tuesday with the exam. I will be accessible on Tuesday, I'll be, during your exam time, I will be accessible with my cell number as well as on email. So if some, if you've got a glitch, feel free to text me or uh, email me for assistance. I will be very readily available the whole time while you guys are doing your exam. The only uh, time I would not be is from ten thirty to ten forty-five, I'll, I'll have my cellphone up and stuff, but I'll still be working with my stats class on that day unless I'm able to end it early for them, okay? So have a good day, good weekend, study hard, and stay safe, and I'll talk to y'all later. You're welcome. Can we take our eyes off the screen so how to work, solve a problem on paper? Absolutely, yes, yes, I, I would expect uh, to be, so, yes, uh, two things. One, I expect you to write the problem down on paper and solve it. And then two, you will have fifteen minutes to take pictures of the work that you did and send it to me for partial credit. So that if you have, the computer scored you wrong on something, uh, maybe you entered it in wrong, or maybe you just made a small error. So with, as long, there, there's an app that I'm gonna send out, and you'll have fifteen minutes to use that app to upload your work to me, um, so that I can see uh, what you did on paper and give you partial credit. They don't let us remove our eyes from the screen, that's what I'm saying. They don't let us remove, who doesn't let you remove your eyes from the screen? Lockdown browser, are you talking about the people that are observing you? I used it for a class before. Lockdown browser, from my understanding, is going to lock, they're, yes, they're going to watch you, but you have to be able to write and solve math. Uh, I will, the, my boss is the one who uh, told me about the app to, so that you guys can take and upload your work. I will contact her immediately and ask her about that, Kelvin, and get back to uh, the class with a general email of an answer for that. Uh, it seems to me illogical that uh, we would not be uh, that you can't write something down on paper. You're, you're gonna have to be able to, to do work on paper to solve math problems, I would think. So, um, unless there's other techniques that I'm just not aware of. So let me investigate that before I, I put my foot in my mouth, um, and get back to you, will that work? Okay, everybody else good, any other questions? Um, I have one, two, three, four, five students left in class from what I can tell. So if all five of you could give me a thumbs up or good to go, say goodbye, so I know that everybody's set. We have Stephanie, we have uh, Alex Smith, we have Kelvin, we have Emily, and we have oh. Stephanie says she's good to go, thank you. Alexis is raising her hand. Emily says she's good, okay, Alexis says she's good, thank you. Oh says you're good, okay, guys, we're ending our session, have a good weekend and uh, look uh, for the last lecture very soon. I haven't majors yet, I did make my statistics yesterday. So as soon as I get stats uploaded today, uh, and give my voice about a thirty minute break, I will make your last video for the last lecture and upload that. Y'all have a good day.